President Lizer here, along with our resident of the Navajo Nation Jonathan Nez and our health professionals here, Dr. Jill Jim and our doctors Brian Johnson and some of our epidemiologists and Dr. Patilla Fowler, human resources director. So today, thank you for joining us, July 13th COVID-19 Town Hall Update, where you'll receive the latest information and updates in this pandemic and also some good encouraging words as well. But as we always do, open up with prayer. I'll give some updates and then I'll pass it on to our president. So thanks again for joining us. Yahtzee, I've been here, Vice President Lizer here. Comanche Nishle, 1200, Bosh's team. Comanche Dashi'che, Asha Dashi'nelis. Good to be with you all. Thank you for joining us again. So let us open up in prayer and I'll give my updates and then pass it on. Ahyat, Shijadie, God, we give you thanks and give you praise this morning. Thank you for another day of life, Lord, as you awaken us. Thank you for the rain, the moisture, for the land is blessed. We continue to pray, Lord, for your intervention here. More rain is needed, Lord, as you know that. And we just ask for healing upon our people, upon our land, Lord. We give you our hearts, our minds, and just praise you for all that you do for us, Lord. Continually, Lord, we as leaders advance every good thing to the people, Lord Father, in regards to services and, Lord, increasing and trying to be part of the great mechanism that enhances the quality of life here, Lord. For you wish us to prosper even as our soul prospers. So we thank you for that. We thank you for your wisdom and knowledge. Help us to apply it now for the blessing and benefit of our people all across this land that you've set us on here. Ahyat, Shijadie, God, we give you all the praise and glory that's due your name. Jesus' name, now be with us all. Amen and amen. So we thank you again, July 13th Town Hall Updates here. Thank you for joining us. We do realize that it is a choice to remain unvaccinated all across the land, not only the United States, that it's a choice to get the COVID vaccine here. But many are questioning, why does COVID keep changing? And so here, you're going to get all the latest information. And, you know, because it's being allowed to spread, you know, we still have many travelers out there, still many people not masking up, and you get what you get. So a virus can spread and it begins to mutate. So here today, you're going to hear a little bit of that information. The latest gating criteria, the latest news on that spread. And so help us to stop the spread of the COVID-19 virus here. And we do urge you as government and as leaders to get vaccinated. So in the United States, no real news to report. But in Arizona, we've been in this pandemic about 16 months now. We have almost hit the 1 million plateau there. We wish it would plateau and then continue to die down. But to this date here, 901,906 total positive cases in Arizona with 345 new cases. Doing a deeper drill down here, Apache County, 11,555 with one new case. So Apache County doing a great job out there. Navajo County, 16,849 with 10 new additional cases to report as of this morning. And Coconino County rounding out our tri-county area in northwestern and, I'm sorry, northeastern and northern Arizona. 18,163 with 22 new cases to report there in Coconino County. Colorado, because we do have land that touches in Colorado. We appreciate this opportunity and the ability to be in a fourth state here. Of course, our people are all over, and you know that. 563,086 is the total of positive cases a year, 16 months in, with 289 new cases to report. New Mexico, 206,551 with 301 new cases, little uptick there. San Juan County, 15,790 there in northwest New Mexico with 16 new cases to report. And lastly, Galt McKinley County, 12,433 with 12 new cases to report there. And rounding out the third state, fourth state here, Utah, 420,214 with 264 new cases to report there. So and lastly, the counties there in southeastern Utah, 1,939 with six additional cases. So we're starting to see a slight uptick there in southeastern Utah with our own Utah Navajo Health System there reporting 1,121 with nine new cases to report there. So definitely definite uptick there. So I appreciate my staff, Adam Begay, helping me provide these numbers to you, the latest numbers here that we're seeing here. And so I'm not wanting to steal the thunder of our esteemed health professionals here and our president here. Those are just bringing us what we look like in the southwest region, the little neck of the woods in the corner of these, four corners of these United States here. And so that's the latest. So appreciate your time. We continue to pray for you as leaders, wanting the best for you all, wanting this virus to leave and go away, to be eradicated from our nation. And we'll continue to pray and do so. But until then, continue to mask up and social distance and clean all of the common touch areas here. And we'll continue to work like it depends on us, but we'll pray. Pray like it depends on our Creator, Shijadie, and God. We give you all the praise and glory for this here, this time. So without further ado, our president Jonathan Nez is waiting in the wings, sir. Welcome to the Town Hall Update here, July 3rd.
Thank you, Vice President, for the updates and for the prayer and for your leadership as well. And today, just a quick update on COVID-19. And thank you for watching. We are going to move and start again on Tuesdays at 10:00 a.m. for the COVID-19 updates for the Navajo Nation. As you all may have heard through the news, social media, media, that there is an uptick in cases. So we are going to continue to give you updates on what the Navajo Nation is doing and what's happening around us. Vice President did give us an overview of the states around us, uptick in cases here on the Navajo Nation. Thank you for your prayers. Since the start of the pandemic, 31,100 people have tested positive for COVID-19 and 29,660 have recovered. If you can put that slide up, Eli. Thank you, Eli, for doing the social media videos here. 1,361 of our Navajo citizens have passed from COVID-19. So within 24 hours, we have four new cases and no deaths. And it also gives you a breakdown of the border town numbers, 8,732, and then also the eight regions, Navajo area, IHS regions, Chinlea, Crown Point, Fort Defiance, Gallup, Cayanta, Shiprock, Tubus City, and Winslow. Last evening, we did have a town hall meeting, and that was in regards to the hardship assistance, the second phase or the second part of the CARES Act. Many of you received direct aid, financial support. There are over 400,000 Navajos. We pretty much took care of paying out about 300,000 or so. So there's about 90,000 plus remaining to get hardship. And so Navajo Nation Council, 24th Navajo Nation Council, did approve reallocating some of those CARES Act that is remaining, including the interest of the $714 million to go back into the hardship account for those that haven't received it. So there are about 1,800 plus people who didn't get CARES Act that have turned in their application and are just ready for a check. Those will be processed soon, within now till August. Come August 1st, there will be accepting applications for those that didn't get their hardship assistance check for two months. Remember, the CARES Act deadline is at the end of the year, so we need to spend the $714 million and the interest by the end of the year pursuant to the Treasury guidelines and the legislation that was approved by the Congress and signed into law by the President of the United States. Half of that has been used for infrastructure projects, waterline, powerline, bathroom additions, broadband telecommunications towers, cistern projects, and many other infrastructure projects. We just ran out of time, and that's why some of the monies had to be reverted back into the hardship account. This time around, the Acting Controller, Elizabeth Begay, rather than give it to a contractor, consultant, to do everything for us, they're going to be doing it themselves. There's going to be jobs that are going to be created from this for those that can help. Job fairs are happening as we speak. Today, there's a job fair in Shiprock Chapter, July 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And this is a job fair for temporary workers, office specialists, interns, office assistants. What we want is to reach as many of our Navajo people as we can that have yet to get hardship funds. Some may be okay with not getting the funds and saying, you know, that those that are really struggling get those funds, and we appreciate them for doing that. But there are a lot of our elders out there in the rural parts of the Navajo Nation that didn't even receive a check yet. And so we are wanting to get those individuals signed up. So today, Shiprock Chapter, tomorrow, July 14th, Chinlea Chapter, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and then July 15th, St. Michael's Chapter, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And I remember Acting Controller saying that there might be a Tubus City day as well. So we'll hit schedule. So that's the Office of the Job Fair Temporary Workers Needed. And some of you, some workers, interns, young people, you can apply. Some of you may have gone through the summer youth employment that doesn't bar you to applying for this temporary work. So we encourage you to apply. As you all know, we signed a resolution last week reopening the Navajo Nation and to reopen our parks and our tourist destinations. So there are visitors coming into the Navajo Nation. Ladies and gentlemen, masks are still required, so wear your masks. Some of these billboards throughout the Navajo Nation, I think most of them that have COVID information that started about a year ago are going to be changing out. They're going to be focused on mask mandates, getting that information out to our visitors and making sure that they are wearing their mask as they travel the Navajo Nation. And then other additional information, that's on behavioral health numbers and things like that. So look for those billboards that are going to be updated throughout the Navajo Nation. Second slide there gives you a vaccine administered to eligible population compared to the United States. United States, 65% at least one dose, 56% fully vaccinated in the United States. Now, Navajo Nation, 70% at least one dose, 63% fully vaccinated. And keep in mind, you've heard me say 70% of the people, adult population, that live on the Navajo Nation, 70% have fully vaccinated, two shots, right? This is telling you that this is everybody that uses the IHS here in the Navajo area. That means Navajos that live off the Navajo Nation, that get their health care on the Navajo. They're included in this. And so if it's focused on residents, that's over 70% of the adult population here on the Navajo Nation, fully vaccinated. That's 98% of what we receive have been used, vaccinations, compared to 86% in the United States. The next slide there, Navajo Nation COVID-19, SARS strain surveillance. The next slide shows you a breakdown of the variant. The Vice President mentioned it earlier. See, COVID-19 has changed into these variants. And so now, you know, they used to call it the UK variant, South African, Brazilian, India, California. Now they're using the Greek alphabet, Alpha, Beta, Gamma, Delta, Epsilon, Beta, Gamma, and Delta, Epsilon. So if you see the chart before us, this is the variants. And these are tests that are randomly reviewed for variants that are out there. So we don't have that many positive cases. So I do need to find out if probably all of them are being, those that are testing positive, I think all of them may be being surveyed here for various variants, because we're just got low numbers, you know, two, three, four, five cases. I know at one time, we had over 20, 20-plus cases one day and cases in the teens at another day. So those are contact tracers are saying that the Navajos are going off the nation, traveling, maybe not wearing masks, not being, you know, cautious, catch that virus, and you're bringing it back to Navajo. Las Vegas was brought up, Phoenix was brought up, Utah was brought up. So we're just asking you to be very careful. I know there might be some prayer pressure off the Navajo Nation when you see everybody not wearing masks and you feel ashamed or maybe embarrassed to wear your mask. I just say, let it be. They're not going to know who you are anyway, right? Because you got a mask on, wear your mask when you're out there off the nation. And also, wear it here on the Navajo Nation, we're mandating it. And we just want you to be careful and be safe. We're doing, you all are doing an outstanding job, ladies and gentlemen. Let's not let up. Let's continue to show the rest of the world that we can beat COVID-19. And we're at a stage where we're at community immunity. You know, if I say herd immunity, somebody's going to comment and say, we're not cattle. We're at community immunity. Let's continue to push this back. When you travel out there, wear your mask, please, wear your mask. I know many of you do that. I heard stories of people going to stores off the nation. We know who all the Navajos are, they said, because we're wearing masks. Good job, continue to do that. So back to the surveillance here. Alpha, which was the UK variant, 114 cases thus far of that variant on the Navajo Nation that have been identified. And contact tracers have been doing a great job in identifying this and, you know, isolating these incidences. On top of that, your vaccinations are pushing back on this virus as well. Beta, which is the South African variant, zero. None of those have been identified here on the Navajo Nation. Gamma, which is the Brazilian variant, right, is, there's four that have been identified here on the Navajo Nation. Now Delta, this is the one that's very contagious and it's a concern here in this country. That's from India. And, you know, this COVID-19 has changed into these different variants. There's nine, remember, we had one. Now we have nine that have been identified. They're all been isolated. Contact tracers have done a good job, as I said, to identify this and tell these individuals to go into isolation, so that doesn't spread. And so Epsilon, which is the California variant, that's 20 thus far here on the Navajo Nation. And there's a mixture between the Beta and the Gamma, which is the South African, and the Brazilian, five that has been identified. There's also another one between the Delta and the, which is the India and the Epsilon, the California, 11. So overall, 163 cases of these variants here on the Navajo Nation. Again, as Vice President mentioned, you know, how to push back on this is to get vaccinated, because it'll slow the spread. We encourage our Navajo people to get vaccinated, not just for you, but for your family here on the Navajo Nation. And we appreciate the awesome work that our frontline workers have done. And, you know, the Alpha, Epsilon, Gamma, and Delta variants seem to spread more easily and quickly than other variants. May lead to more cases of COVID-19 in our communities. And we're hoping to push back to the, together, we can overcome this. Get vaccinated, right? And wear your mask. You know, I wear the K95s. Some, somewhere, just the gaiters, they call it, or handkerchief. You know, whatever you can do to cover your nose and your mouth when you're out there would be very helpful in pushing back on the virus. Of course, washing your hands with soap and water, hand sanitizers. We may be going out and doing checkpoints to give out additional hand sanitizers soon in various communities. Six feet, social distancing, avoid large crowds. If you are large crowds, wear your mask. We have visitors here on the Navajo Nation. We don't know where they're coming from. As long as you wear your mask, follow these protocols, you will be safe and push back on the virus. I know some of the tour companies have committed that they will do their very best to follow these protocols as they are reopening, and we wish them well. And if you do have some symptoms, get tested. Now you can get tested and find out in one day, and maybe even hours, get your results. And that's one way of being proactive as well. If you do feel sick, isolate yourself, go into quarantine, and again, get tested. And lastly, just help out with, help the contact tracers out. They call you, you know, be frank, be truthful. And that would be one way to make sure that we don't have a uncontrolled spread here on the Navajo Nation. So that'll be my report, all in English. I think we all understand English. There's going to be some radio segments in Navajo that are going to be coming out, one-minute commercials going out to our Navajo people as well. So just for time's sake today, I'm going to do it all in English. Dr. Fowler will do translations today as well. And we have Dr. Jim from the Navajo Department of Health, the Health Command Operations Center. We got Del Yazi from the Epidemiology Team. We have Captain Brian Johnson from the Indian Health Services that's going to share with us. And we appreciate you all tuning in today. Every Tuesdays at 10:00 a.m., giving you an update, what's happening here on the Navajo Nation. Continue to push back on the virus. You all are warriors, continue to wear your masks. These are your armor and your weapons to combat this modern-day monster called COVID-19. God bless you. God bless our great Navajo Nation. And I'm going to turn the time over to Dr. Jill Jim, Executive Director for Department of Health. Dr. Jim?
Yes, good morning, President. Well, thank you for not only calling on me here to honor names, I don't have a vice president, I can't handle any of that. I just wanted to reiterate all the messages that have been said. These are gating criteria that the team works on every single day. And all the ways since the pandemic started, these measures that Dell's going to provide today since have been activated, I think mid-last summer. So those are the information that we use to guide us to the extent on how we reopen as well. So I just wanted to share that information. And I saw not only she cried, or I had none to date me though, she, Dr. Jill, didn't mean she had to. At least by hand to begin the mission though, don't the initial look on the small touchy, but she's changing though. It's changing to the table, it's a funny, it's a little. I don't know, just on the I, she knows that, or it's a stance. I should be today, or it's so hard that she'd be. I should cry, the crossing side, you know, it's a, the whole, I need you. And it, the whole, she didn't, I don't need, could I see? Although um, the cluster investigation. Cluster investigations. I just wanted to share that for the month of May, um, we were looking at um, small numbers that were in May. And I wanted to ask our team, they're, they're the ones that um, identify when there's a cluster more than two cases. And certainly it might be in a family, it might be at a school, it might be at a restaurant. All different places where we receive reports of um, these sort of like small outbreaks. And so what we try to do is. When there's a positive, we immediately try to activate a contact tracer and case manager out there from. The local hospitals so they can get people isolated, quarantined, tested. And then now we also tried to check if they're vaccinated or not. So. Um, all of these healthcare providers, public health nurses, C X Rs are still out there. Um, we're still fully activated to support those individuals that have COVID nineteen. We still have food boxes. That we have as well. So for the month of May, there were around forty-one cases. And out of those, twenty-six were from family gatherings. So it's very important to also know. That um, more than half of the cases were related to family gatherings. So. I mean, a lot of things that we learned from COVID is to wear your mask. And also um, find ways to still share food um, when that's the case, but. I used to just say um, to still remind each other. Um, so hey, the. Uh, make sure that um, that person stays home and isolates or either quarantines at home. It's very important to still get tested after a number of days to, to see um, if you are positive as well. And so I just want to reiterate that message that um, gatherings are still um, I would say dominantly. Um, supporting the numbers, but the only way those um, gatherings happen, of course, is someone. Went off the reservation and came back too. So it's not like we're spreading it within the Navajo Nation. Our numbers are so low. So. So be careful out there and wear your mask. And I am always proud of our Navajo citizens. Um, you do practice your mask wearing out there and um, keep your mask on. They might not follow those um, mask wearing, but. We are very careful. Um, I know we're very careful and we will not experience a third surge. If we ke- keep practicing all the three Ws, wearing your mask, washing your hands and watching your distance. So. And that's why we are um, keeping some of these, um, all the businesses open and running now. We have casinos that are going to operate as of Monday. Tours and businesses or companies out in the different parks are now operating. And then business owners out there. Um, thank you for reminding our visitors or anyone to continue to wear a mask when they come into the store without a mask because. We here on Navajo are, we wear masks. So I just want to thank all our citizens and business owners for. Reinforcing the messaging of wearing masks as well. So. I just want to reiterate that, but I know the team has a lot more to add. Um, today I just wanted to talk about clusters and. Also that we still have a threat as President Mez has mentioned, and thank you for all. Their work and Vice President in ensuring that we continue to um, respond to the public health emergency. So. There is of course, as mentioned, the Delta variant that's out there. So. Just be careful. Um, that's the only way we can stop this and reduce it and. We will, we will not experience a third surge. So. I want to just go ahead and um, bring, um, take time over to. Um, Captain Johnson, but I also want to talk about family gatherings as well. So make sure there's a twenty-five person limit. And gatherings and making sure there's social distancing and. And still emphasize the to-go orders or menus. Um, if you're having a gathering and you want to do that safely. Set up tables at, at home, um, where there's one family that can eat together. Another family can eat together at another table outdoors. Um, the weather is nice and also reduce sharing of items like water or things like that. Making sure you have disposable. Forks and also bottled water, things like that. And then limiting. Um, sort of um, any activities that will um, increase the transmission of COVID because. Um, a lot of our younger individuals are also unvaccinated and are causing these upticks. In these clusters are the unvaccinated individuals. So. If you're unvaccinated out there and you might be asymptomatic at a family gathering, it's very important to ensure that. Um, that you are um, transparent with your information if you travel. Off the nation and you might have been exposed to a close contact. So. Being um, honest um, with your family members about doing that, um, will also help reduce the transmission. So. If you've been in close contact or you're feeling sick, always stay home and self-isolate, self-monitor, wear your mask. So. I just want to remind everyone to do that and remind our, our kids too. Are you quite deep? They might be traveling off and doing activities and visiting family members. On the question, just when they're visiting their relatives or their cousins next door. If you had none, so I just want to go ahead and um, give time over to Captain Johnson. Um, he's also part of the Health Command Operations Center and then always appreciate you being on here, um, Captain Johnson. So. Hand it over to you. So take it away, Captain Johnson.
Okay, uh, hey, thank you, Dr. Jim. Um, certainly, thank you, Dr. Jim. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to. Uh, be here today again on another Facebook session, make sure that we're sharing information. Uh, that is critical for the Navajo uh, people to uh, be aware of. And uh, I also want to thank uh, President Mez and Vice President Lizer for their continued messaging. Um, along with yourself and uh, Dr. Fowler and uh, Del Yazi, um, who has done an outstanding job as well. Uh, during the COVID nineteen uh, pandemic. So uh, yes, thank you. Thank you so much for the work you do and thank you for the partnerships. Uh, that, that we've enjoyed over time. Um. Uh, so uh, I just want to say good morning, everyone. Good mid morning. And uh, this is Captain Brian Johnson. I serve as the Acting Deputy Area Director for the Navajo Area Indian Health Service here in St. Michael's, Arizona. I'm responsible for um, working with uh, Ms. Rose Manso, our area director. And um, Ms. Loretta or Dr. Loretta Christensen, our Chief Medical Officer. With um, all of the federally operated uh, healthcare facilities, whether they're hospitals and health centers. But also working with our uh, tribal health organization partners across the Navajo Nation as well. And when I. Want to give a, a big hello to our, our tribal partners out there across uh, Navajo area. Um, so for this Tuesday, um, not, not a whole lot has changed. Uh, in regards to uh, where we stand with the COVID nineteen uh, pandemic. Um, you know, we continue again to, to work with our uh, tribal partners, uh, including the Navajo Nation. In terms of uh, working together as a healthcare system locally. And I still like to um, you know, mention that. We're, we're, we're fortunate here on the Navajo Nation because we do have a, a central um, point. Being the Navajo Nation, working through Dr. Jim, Jim and the uh, Healthcare Operations Center. And, and being able to keep the communications flowing between all of the healthcare facilities um, across Navajo Nation. Which has been very beneficial during the uh, the COVID nineteen pandemic. So uh, thank you for that. Um, it's, it's so critical. If, if we think about other uh, loc- locations across the United States, whether it be um. Uh, it, it could be uh, Native American reservations or it could be uh, small municipalities, uh, larger cities. It's, it's doubtful that uh, oftentimes that the communications are as direct as they are here on the Navajo Nation. And that's because of the dedicated uh, workforce, the dedicated providers, the administrators who are uh, certainly working together. So I again, feel very fortunate in that way. And I know here in a moment, um, I'll be turning the time over to uh, Del Yazi with the uh, Navajo Nation EpiCenter. And uh, he'll share information, I'm sure, on uh, the gating measures for COVID nineteen and uh, give some of the uh, updated. Uh, quantitative information that uh, we, we followed over time. And uh, but I just want to reiterate to the public out there that we continue uh, with all of our healthcare facilities to, to monitor the case numbers of COVID nineteen. We continue to uh, uh, monitor the uh, testing positivity rates. Uh, that we see with uh, COVID nineteen testing and as well as the hospital capacity. Um, each morning. There is uh, information shared about the hospital capacities and, and talking about the number of inpatient beds, talking about the uh, intensive care unit beds. And uh, others um, uh, across the Navajo Nation, which is very helpful. It gives some insight as to where we stand. And so. Um, if we see upticks in the number of beds or being used increases, then we know that there. Could potentially be something going on. And we also know that we have partners uh, beyond the Navajo Nation that we can reach out to when needed. But we're also continuing with the uh, contact tracing activities. And I'm sure um, everyone listening has, has learned over time what a contact tracer is. And I think President uh, Mez. Made a kind of mention uh, this morning, which certainly is appreciated. And that is um, if by chance you're contacted by a contact tracer and, and they have the difficult job and difficult task of letting people know. That they either were or possibly were exposed uh, to a positive individual. And uh, this is just to help control and make sure we manage, uh, continue managing cases appropriately. So it does not spread to others. It's all about protecting people. And uh, preventing the spread of, of the disease. And so um, we continue to do these things on a daily basis and will continue to do that for the foreseeable future. Um, and again, working with the Navajo Nation. Um, as was mentioned just a, a little bit this morning uh, earlier, we know that the, the number of cases of COVID nineteen. Uh, can, continue to be uh, reduced or decreased. And um, we're not seeing massive uh, increases or anything like that at this time. But uh, we do see upticks or uh, uh, small increases uh, across the Navajo Nation. And uh, as Dr. Jim had mentioned. And we know that with uh, certain types of uh, gatherings, uh, large family gatherings and other gatherings. We know that uh, some of these upticks or increases are associated with these types of events. And it's not that people are trying to make this happen, of course. Um, and none of us want the uh, disease to continue to propagate and spread. But it's just that we get a little comfortable over time, um, and not taking the precautions maybe that we should. Now I. I certainly support uh, the notion and, and the fact that over time the Navajo people have been just. Outstanding with uh, following the recommendations of the local uh, health experts. In terms of, from, you know, protecting yourself and protecting others around you. And um, I think from time to time, all of us, including myself, need to be reminded that uh, we, we all have a responsibility to continue to look out for others. Look out for ourselves, look out for our family members in terms of uh, taking precautions, making sure that we're wearing our masks, washing our hands. And uh, we, we've always talked about wash, watching our, our distance as well. And so um, these, these things continue to be important. Um, I, I do know that um, as, as we get, as folks get together more and we celebrate holidays such as the Fourth of July and. And uh, other similar holidays that are, are big family holidays, family oriented holidays. Um, it's very easy uh, over time to uh, begin letting our guards down. And uh, we, we know that. From earlier in the pandemic and throughout the pandemic, one of the things that we saw was the transmission of the disease. And, and of course, it was not intentional. But uh, when people uh, ate together in close uh, distance from one another, particularly indoors. That, that this was a problem. So, so people uh, went to eat, they take off their masks and then um, the disease is uh, easier spread. When you're in, in, in that capacity. So something to keep in mind if uh, you are going to be eating together as a, as a larger group. To uh, think about that, that, that the disease can spread. And so um, you know, outside, maybe eating outside and keeping a distance. Uh, while, while you eat, those kinds of things. Just taking those types of precautions to, to make sure that everyone's safe. Um, also just wanted to um, to continue to send the message that COVID nineteen testing. Uh, still continues at all of the uh, health facilities here on Navajo, whether they're tribal health organizations. Such as Tuba City, um, Winslow, Fort Defiance, Sage Memorial and others. Um, it, they, it, the testing continues as well as at the federal sites as well. So indifferent, if you uh, are uh, see a, a provider at a federal site or a tribal health organization site, doesn't matter. The COVID nineteen testing continues to uh, be available. We continue to encourage the public that if you feel that you've been exposed, if you feel that possibly you're having symptoms. Um, as uh, President Mez mentioned, um, to, to isolate yourself um, in those situations, but also. Uh, make sure that you're notifying your local healthcare provider, the one that you typically use. And um, and, and go and be seen and, and get tested. Uh, they'll, they'll work with you certainly to do that. Particularly if you have that concern, uh, in, any concern about potential symptoms. So um, just want to make sure that folks understand that, that this is a, this is a really critical part of us. Uh, the, the healthcare system, being able to monitor the disease and, and the, the virus. And the variants that have been talked about over time. Um, if we're doing testing and we find a certain location where we're seeing multiple, multiple cases. Then that tells us we have a hotspot going on with this situation and we are uh, we're going to move on that quickly. To investigate, to uh, uh, contact the uh, contact tracers, have them check with the individuals living in that area. And we can also send out messaging. Through radio or flyers or other means across uh, uh, the Navajo Nation, but particularly in that general region where we're seeing. Uh, more of the virus activity. So the, again, the testing does a number of things. It tells you individually if you are positive or negative. But it also helps us understand uh, from a bird's eye view, what does the disease look like here in the Navajo Nation? Where are we seeing? Uh, transmission of the disease. And uh, then we're able to work towards uh, snuffing that out. So just something to keep in mind. Um, we, we talked a little bit about um, you know, the vaccines. And um, of course, here on the Navajo Nation, there's been a, a really a committed uh, and dedicated workforce to make sure that the uh. The vaccine continues to be readily available. And, and it is certainly the most important tool. If, if we think about having a toolbox. To, to work on things in terms of this virus, the, the, the uh, vaccine itself is the most important tool that we have in our toolbox. In order to fight this uh, pandemic. So we continue to advocate and encourage individuals. If you have not been vaccinated. We still continue to advocate and encourage you to do that. My family members have, others' family members have as well. And um, it's, it's just so important to stopping this disease. There was a comment this morning about um, herd immunity and, and what do we need to uh, breach and. And the more people that we have vaccinated, the less likely this disease will be able to continue to transmit itself. Or propagate itself uh, to others. So just keep that in mind as, as we think about ourselves, we think about others as well. So um, interestingly, if we think, if we think about vaccines in Indian country, and I'm talking about Indian country across the United States, including Alaska. It's pretty amazing to think that uh, over one point seven uh, million doses of vaccine have been distributed across the Indian health system. So some of that, of course, happened here on the Navajo Nation. Some of those happened, say, within the Albuquerque Indian Health Service and the California Area Indian Health Service. And working with our tribal partners. And again, and this, this included Alaska as well. So if you look across the United States, one point seven million uh, plus doses have been provided in Indian country. Um, certainly critical to, to our success. And we're going to continue to uh, make sure that we have. And we're going to continue to make sure that we have that vaccine available. You know, if we have a need, all we have to do is ask and we get the vaccine here. So no problem, don't worry about having, not having enough or adequate vaccine supplies. Please just reach out and ask to be vaccinated and that can certainly happen. One of the things that we also like to talk about is that in terms of the IHS and our local tribal partners, one of the things we're focusing on is vaccinating the whole family. So when we think about families, we're not just talking about, you know, mom and dad, we're also talking about grandma and grandpa. We're also talking about the kids who have been approved to receive vaccines. Because it's been found that if the whole family is not vaccinated, then there still can be transmission. So it's important that we look at it from a whole family approach out there across our service area. So I'm going to just go ahead and just kind of hit on several important takeaway topics for today, maybe you can share with your family, with your colleagues. The number of cases on the nation is staying low at this time, but we do see upticks. And it's important to realize that those upticks are happening. So if you feel that there's low cases and they're just continuing to decrease, that would not be accurate. Our cases are, the numbers are low, but we do continue to see increases from time to time, such as around holidays when people are getting together more. So that should give everyone some clue or some idea about this particular disease. We've talked forever now about the variants or the virus that's changed forms. And we know that there are multiple different types of variants that have been, information has been shared. I think the real hot topic more recently is the Delta variant. And President Nez and Dr. Jim touched on that as well. And these are considered as variants of concern by the Centers for Disease Control. And what they're seeing with these viruses is that the vaccines are effective. However, if you are not vaccinated, then these diseases, these variants actually transmit and propagate quicker. And they can also result in hospitalization, so they can be quite harsh. So again, cannot overemphasize the need for continuing vaccinations. If you're on the bubble and you're wondering, trying to make that decision, the healthcare providers here on Navajo overall do suggest and advocate and encourage you to get your COVID-19 vaccination. Also, the next message is just continue wearing your mask on the Navajo Nation. We know that is mandatory and for the foreseeable future until such time that the nation and the Navajo Nation leadership decides otherwise. And so please use your masks. Again, we get comfortable around family a lot of times, family and friends. But in these instances, it's still important to wear your mask. Continue washing your hands, continue getting tested as you feel that you may need tested. Please reach out, that's not a problem. Just contact your local healthcare site and they will certainly, certainly help you out. So on a final message, let's continue to strive for community immunity. So we want to protect yourself, protect your family, protect your elders by doing these things that we've talked about. So with that said, I just want to thank everyone again for the opportunity to talk here on the Facebook session and share information. And we certainly appreciate the Navajo Nation sponsoring these events. So I'm going to now turn it over to Mr. Bell Yazi, who I believe will talk about some gating measure information and others. So thank you, Dell, and please take it away.
Thanks, Captain Johnson. Appreciate your update. Hello, President and Vice President, our XOC team, Dr. Jim, Dr. Fowler, again, and everyone on the town hall. So again, my name is Dell. I am with the Navajo Epidemiology Center and also with the Health Command Operations Center COVID Epidemiology Team. We do have a large epidemiology team working together, surveilling the COVID cases every day. And we do some analyses every week, what we call the gating measures. We look at a number of indicators that provide us guidance as we move forward in this COVID pandemic. So as you see on this first slide, it's a two-week time period from June 25th through July 8th is the analytical time period. The numbers I'm going to show reflect a two-week time period. So this is our gating matrix that we follow. We're currently in the yellow, the yellow level, which is a moderate community spread and a moderate disease risk status. And the far left column over here are the indicators that we look at every day. Number of cases, also testing positivity, as well as hospital capacity. And also, we currently are collecting some vaccine data as well. And so these are the indicators that we follow each day and each week. This is our latest EpiCurve. It's a nine-day weighted centered moving average, the red line. And then you see the bars here, our numbers do fluctuate quite a bit every day. So as you can see towards this end here, it's the past 60 days picture here. The left axis is, or the vertical axis is the number of cases. And then on the horizontal axis is the date. From early May to July 8th is this timeframe. So just want to highlight this bar here was last Wednesday. July 7th, we reported 24 cases. And that's the highest number of cases we've seen in quite some time. So it is a little bit concerning, but we're continuing to monitor cases every day. And for that reason, a little bit, people, the President and everyone who presented have been talking about a little bit of increase in cases. So you see this line going up a little bit. So that's a result of the increase in cases that we saw last week. So and we'll see cases as we continue to move forward. And then this is our latest heat map here on the left, but I'll go to the right here in this yellow box. So seven-day time period, which is from July 2nd to July 8th, we had 70 cases on Navajo Nation. So that puts our incidence rate at 44 cases per 100,000 people. Again, we haven't seen 70 cases in a seven-week, or seven-day time period in a, maybe three, three to four months. So it is a little bit concerning, but we'll continue to monitor cases every day. You see here, our border states, Utah continues to see an increase in COVID cases with this darker shaded brown color. And then also within the nation, the IHS service areas, Tuba had the most cases over that seven-day time period. It was about 24, if I remember correctly. And Gallup and Kianta also saw an increase in cases. So and that's the picture, COVID picture on the nation. Some additional metrics here, the testing capacity is, over that seven-day period, is 5.1%. It did go up a little bit from, it was like 3.5%. So those increase in cases did, you know, put our positivity rate at 5.1. There are, every day, there are testing still going on on the nation. So the average daily test in the last seven days is 268 tests are being conducted on Navajo. And then hospital capacity, this is regular hospital beds and ICU beds at all the IHS facilities on Navajo Nation is below 70%. So that's, that's good. And then contact tracers, as we've been mentioned as well, there are 10 of them for every new daily COVID case. So that's sufficient. We'd like to be above five, so we're at 10, so that's, that's good. And then just nationwide is a COVID picture as far as disease risk for COVID. You see a lot of orange and yellow, there's some green there. But within our region, in the southwest area, Utah's in this orange color that's a higher disease, COVID disease risk level compared to Arizona, New Mexico and Colorado. This is by counties, again, within our region. You know, the only county that's in red, that's kind of in our area, is this Archuleta County, which is up by Pagosa Springs and Bayfield area, is red. It's really close to Navajo, so we just like to, you know, highlight that and continue to see, monitor that county. And then San Juan County in Utah is orange for a higher COVID disease risk as well. And La Plata County and McKinley County has also, you know, turned orange as well for a seven-day time period. And then this is our, I think President showed this, the variant profile on Navajo Nation. There are a total of 163 cases identified with a variant of concern. Most of them are the UK variant at 114, and then followed by California variant at 20, and so on. So we do also have identified nine cases with the Delta, the India variant on the nation. So this is an ongoing project as well that our EpiTeam is tracking. It's the Navajo Nation COVID-19 SARS strain surveillance. This is in partnership with TGEN Translation Genomics, Translational Genomics out of the Flagstaff TGEN campus. So we send our positive COVID samples on Navajo Nation to TGEN for variant sequencing. So these are, you know, the latest, as of today, actually, yeah, today, this morning, this report came in from TGEN. And these are the latest numbers for variants of concern on Navajo. And then this is variant profile for the US. This is off a CDC website as of June 19th. You see a lot of the, or a couple of things to highlight here. The UK variant has decreased, as you see here. However, the Delta variant has increased. So the UK variant is now at about 44% of all the variants. The Delta variant is now at 30%. It used to be like at 10%, it went up to 30. So and also the Brazilian, the Brazilian variant is also about the same as the last analytical period. So last, this is our, my last slide, this is our, you know, we remain in the yellow level, as I mentioned, for the 12th consecutive week, for about three, three months, we've been in yellow. So mainly because of the cases. Testing public health hospital capacities are really, for the most part, are in the green. It's because of the cases, it keeps us in the yellow. We saw, as I mentioned, 70 cases over a seven-day time period, which puts our incidence rate at 44, which fits in within this range. And therefore, we remain in the yellow for the 12th consecutive week. So that's our latest numbers as far as our gating metrics and indicators on Navajo Nation. I'm going to stop here and hand it back over to, or hand it over to Dr. Fowler. Dr. Fowler, thank you.
El sahi ea, kodo ala laj deynol nishi frontline workers nikideni. Ikhia ha, nikidi ni dole. Kode lsesa, da nollini, aro tala jundal nishi. Betisnei jahi, aro izel ebel kahodzaj deynol nishi. Ikhia ha, shik e shidne e kodo nikidene lini, lato ba kha anachja. Aro di oh, lini nacha dahanihii nikido frontline workers da nollne. E do ikhe he. Aro daan nishko business deynol yedi ido. Uh nikid, dene nikid, ya he kha ido da ichnihi. E do ikhe he, e shi islo, nikido frontline workers da nollne, ea ikhe he nikidi ni dole. Kodo e chadne i gisiben nacha etanha, lini e di. The cross match at, da bedi lini nasnihi, ati nasnihi shik e ro shidne e. Oko ye go be etah, kuchia, aro nikido ni, kodo ben shina huilne. Aro la shi go ayn da, e shi islo be etah huili, ya do ben achi ni kin. E hot eh, aro kune ea ashkonde, nikidne kodo hina tan lini. So telen lini ashkia, aro shichado izel, ndada lini jo eh. Ye daan ni do, bik ahwinil e, oka aro ye lke da hatah. Oko di, apte lne bela granai kachon. Nikina adahne kodo, dana desk, kila iwe ite la chohinzen. Nikidah, dana desk, kedi ita dilne i do. Um, choshdoitini lhaon olnili, jo eh, kashine la edi. Ye go bahastki nikidi ne, ea ben nacha, lato nacha dalne. Di izet aho bahadalnehi, bata dilne, ea aro na nallini. Oko ea ben na, kudin nikidah dana desk. Do ea ye, ote nan dechon, kodo ba na hanai, taha leitai, kido tchil chohinzen. Aro di tchekena, ya holne edi, ea iada, edada, edada i, eh, kodo peso, lekinat, bede chitahidetah. Eh, lhaqanatachuilne nikidne, ea edi cares eh. The second and final phase, isne kashino lna, she peso. Aro bahadat ohla, dahna chayet, da. Na chayet, da, lhaqadat ohla, gof nikidetda isya, ea ikhe he. Lato kodo taholne, ikhe he peso, koto ohla, da dahne ni. Njono she tudeisolli, oh. Aro ea lha ea aro nikidetda isya, da ea shi kwa di, ta ishi she bahanes. Ah, jo eh, sh'tadollik nikidonid. E do ati apa ahhoti, e ba ahonosen. Oko di, second phase, ylne ni gi eh, na chayet, da bahadat ohla, gof, ea do nacha ahhoti, da isha, eh, kwa ena cha bahonosen. E di taho aro, khatinla, go, aro peso lhaqanana, do wado, eh, ik abel na ahhoti, aj edi. Uh, ea iada, ban tahosilne, na shitrona, nzo, eh, ap kuchah na i, gis, ea aj nathan, na do lki. Oko oha yu, eh, kodo peso, vichno tahagi, ya, ya he tan zen. Ashit, ea she injono chitayos i. Aro lato, yat e nikisadi, ea do oyu kodo tahsi di, sa, oko don hina tan lini. Edi aj, Office of the Controller, dey lini, aj, sateke, case twisanidada lini. Lato adol, wa, eh, temporary, wa, ya, ohonza, ja, na nishi. Badadot, aro, akha do, wa, li, jo eh, da ban tahasne. Edi chindle, da, uh, nadani, ne, shi lhaqalho, ah, jop, beer, dey lne. Aj nezna, ye dahahodish, eh, tchad, go, olshon. Aro iska, edi chindli chapter, je, eh, nezna, gohna, ji, sh'tchad, je. Aro le, shla adah, yolkhal, gohne, aj edi, kwa, eh, do, so, just say, Michael's. Chapter, aj do, na, aro na, ne, eh, le, uh, tiba siri, ki, do, uh, gohne nestes, je. Aj edi damodot na kiskanet, na dino yolkhal, aro chapter, ha, jo, da, lhaqalna ho, ah. Aro di, crampoint chapter, aj ei na dino, anakiyolkhal, gohne, doors, ego. Aj ei crampoint chapter, je, ea she unachaba ahonosen dole, ylne kodo hina tan lini. Aro di, choshdoitini, nallini, di, ni, gi, alladne, za, dino asha, dino atcha. Oko ne, na, ebel na, da do, na. Oko di, nda alchahi, njono nda alcha, aj nan nish, um, barnilyani, gi. Oko nda alcha, chahleit, ah, chade, la, chela, ilan, na, bedo, na, la, da, lini, jo eh, nda alchahi. Eh, she di, nda aska, di, isapetahodolna, eh, edi, aho, wa, deh. She itki i, deh, do, ta, ta, iya, ta, ah, she, kwa, eh, eh, she, uh, ta, iya, do, tlo, tla, she, kahoo, ah, da, jo, uh, lini, ikhia, nda altiho. Aro xalni, eh, eh, na, kodo ba ahollian, gilne. Chae da, da, pa, ta, iya, go, da, elhi, chi, khe, go, da. Do, hajo, ye, da, da, halne, da, ah, ni, sha, od, seda, da, no. Goya, iya, go, eh, sentamari, mno, da, do, ya, dahodolne, da. Aro, akha, ah, aro sahalle, eh, na, ba, ah, kuyan, alsa, ne, huinosen, jo, dan, nikidi, ne, na, cha, ni, zeni, ben nacha. Aro lha, eh, tcham, da, asde, oh, aro, ilnaxza. Aro kodo lha, da, adar, yunat, ilna, jo, koda, eh, hi. Aro ye, tchana, kahatan, kisi, lini, eh, ati, ah, kote, beni, ye, go, no, eh, ya, shik e ro shidne, eh, do, nachaba ahonosen dole, ashkonde. Aro kodo, shich, eh, lini, do, ya, na, ho, ne. Ada, tye, aro di, an, hina, tan, lini, ke, na, asda, ni, edi, kune, la, bena, da, do, na, lini, eh, do, kodo ya, na, hasne. Aro shich, eh, lini, edi, hina, itai, ashkonde, no, ahonosen. Ah, da, koko, aro di, kashi no, lna, edi, bik ahonol, ini, eh, do, ikhe he. Oh, ahonoh, yu, eh, na, ho, tcham, da, da, cha, da, ni, chi, do, ni, ze, bata, da, esbalo. Ba, he, ni, zen, dan, ylne, ash, ini, lato, bayahasen, deh. Do, nda, bayat, an, itzeno, cha, deh, she, deh, ni, kha, eh, she, lto, ah, nikipetah, huili, ah, eh, injone. Aro di, le, i, isik, nah, kaidonle, lha, lato, ye, uh, tis, um, na, cha, ni, da, be, da, nish, ite, CDC, dey lini. Aj, eh, atcha, ates, es, lana, khe, dan, ylne, do, ni, chi, do, ni, ze, bata, esbali, ka, na, ho, le, dan, ylne. Eh, jashi, oko da, mi, nda, nikidene, ni, lini, do, dene, belkahodzo, baka, ne, da, ni. Eh, ati, ni, chi, do, ni, ze, bata, da, esbalo, inosen. Aro hastha, ates, es, tara, da, khe, go, hota, eh, oh, huinosen, isha, nacha, ni, zeni, bena, kodo, hina, tan, lini, hota, nikiyoke. Aro shich, eh, da, ne, kodo, elchinen, lini, hajo, bena, bena, tken. Chala, di, oldcha, lini, ayn da, ne, o, ba, 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 na, alteh, do, bayat, chi. Di, aj, um, oldcha, na, raj, na, tani, da, lipa, da, oldcha, da, da, lini, hajo, be, beltaholne, ano, nacha, alchind, at, ah, ho, wado, kada, na, no, tken. Di, kade, etah, da, ilte, oko, bahani, zeni, elchinen, lini, chae, eh, aro, ba, chayan, ro. Aro, elchind, aro, ya, blkana, khe, else, di, taho, izel, elchinen, ni, aro, lha, izel, bata, halle, da, jo eh, kwa, ena, cha, ya, na, kovka. Aro, ne, edi, um, Captain Brian Johnson, jo eh, aj, human, lini, rose, rose, linsa, wa, ya, aro, da, Christian, sen. Isel, inen, lini, aj, itis, ye, daan, ihi, aj, eh, ati, ilchide, ni, lini, shi, njono, alchide, lne. Ah, huich, elchintahui, ne, do, di, na, ni, lini, ah, ne, kha, ah, huich, be, 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 shbahane, be, elchintahui, ne. Aro di, ncha, ap, in, se, kes, il, od, ah, lha, ne, tle. Oko di, na, alchahi, ati, nda, alcha, isel, im, elhas, anago, task, eh, da, zep, da, po, oh, ati, da, zehla, at. Um, da, bi, rachon, hota, eh, um, ba, ba, bayan, eh, ba, ba, baye, tchi, do, da, si, kes. Aro di, nda alchahi, do, njono, nda alcha, aj, do, da, dino, zen. Njono, nda alcha, do, do, bish, on, eh, ete, go, olshon, nda alcha. Aro, ne, ea, di, um, nikid, chi, do, ni, ze, bata, da, esbalo, na, khe, eh, ah, hota, ne, ylne, oko di, islam, da, atle, ho, do. Chae, da, da, ah, ho, wa, deh, da, bedilna, ho, na, alcha, hota, ye, nan, hiska, oh, eh, ah, kon, be, ylne, ho, do, ne. Jo eh, hatsba, ilne, oh, yu, bata, do, na, oh, na, nami, na, ne, yitla, edi. Um, liar, da, dey, lne, be, eh, ho, zeni, aj, nikidoh, do, ni, lo, deh, bech, be, ne, da, aj, ben, ylne, ho, do, ne. Oko, aro, eh, tan, no, eh, izel, ine, eh, tan, lini, eh, ashkonde. Nikha, atat, oh, zet, aro, nacha, atat, sahi, izel, nacha, hatat, do, ni, chala, izel, ati, hole, no, do, ah, hole, no. Aro di, ba, ahonosen, oh, yu, nacha, atas, zego, edi, ah, tchilo, edi, do, chij, lini, pi, tathiti, kha, jo, gilne. Oko, aj, izel, ine, belteini, nishi, edi, tene, no, oh, uh, ho, wa, gidna, ist, hani, do, ah, eh, eh, da, no, ilda. At, eh, bik, eh, dan, lini, il, do, ah, tepa, da, oh, zet, jo, hota, um, na, dahala, lta, oko di, apte, be, lini. Dana desk, kedi, ben nacha, ashkonde. Nikilla, tanda, gis, aro, choshdoitini, ye, ni, se, di, sen, ten, se, chidol, hen, sen, ita, se, chidol. Aro, stha, des, es, tara, na, khe, hota, eh, yilchah, na. Aro di, na, she, yash, lha, yash, izel, kodo, ya, na, hasne. Edi, kaltsoe, ati, bi, ita, ah, ni, dahota. I, isitahota, edi, ya, ishta, soc, jo, di, kune, eh, July, fourth, lne. Ida, uh, da, don, ba, na, alteh, da, she, ida, she, oh, yu, elkho, khe. Oko di, na, alcha, edi, ya, ishta, shle, na, dino, ah, shla, yolkha, do, ne. Ya, ishta, soc, se, bi, yolkha, je, eh, na, aska, i, gi, oko, ne, tada, ne, na, alki, do, eh, kodo, ya, holne. Oko di, nikid, uh, nikidene, belkahodzo, ba, kha, edi, ito, na, nestes, eh, ye, go, da, desk, ke. Aj, she, ye, go, dahota, aro, ne, uh, bena, go, ke, dahana, tini, li, na, njoso, lha, aj, do, oyu, dahana, na, za. Oko, nde, di, na, alcha, wa, ye, ne, eh, ayn, da, alcha, oko, nde, isel, ebel, hasa, eh, task, eh, lini, ah, bel, hasa. Oko di, yat, ende, izel, lini, nacha, tahali, i, gi, di, isla, di, belkahodzo, je, aj, eh, ya, la, peso, be, oldcha, oh, jo, eh, eighty six percent. Eh, kune, la, eh, um, bichin, iskili, dene, dan, lini, oh, yu, ba, tahali, ya. Aro di, nikidene, ne, lini, eh, la, peso, ba, sa, la, peso, go, eh, ke, ninety eight percent. Jo, kune, la, eh, izel, nacha, tahali, ya, na, ash, itakuni, tesh, ah, nacha, tahalne, la, eh, na, ati, oyu. Um, dahana, ti, aro di, na, kidi, uh, la, shi, go, bata, dilna, o, an, eh, kidi, jo, aj, do, ya, na, ho, ne, oko. Nle, isla, di, belkahodzo, je, baltwolcha, oh, di, hini, kihkahodzo, je, eh, eh, ye, go, nikidah, dana, desk, ke, nle, ya, da, na, kidi, ne, oko. Ohonza, je, di, um, na, kida, mod, je, bata, do, na, eh, nikidah, da, go, na, ne, desk, ke. Oko di, uh, ros, do, je, do, yolkho, je, aro di, da, ben, sa, je, eh, ati, da, soc. Aro di, so, le, belkahodzo, je, aj, eh, ya, it's, so, ne, yitla, eh, orange. Oko, ikhia, ati, yellow status, bi, kha, eh, kodo, nacha, ahonosen. Oko, hinago, ho, ni, gi, eh, sa, ashi, go, ati, den, da, ben, ke. Also, eh, she, also, rabata, azee, ben nacha, aro di, estoyt, eh, ni, kha, un, old, ni. At, er, sadne, sak, di, na, asha, di, na, ah, tra, kune, la, eh, kwan, hitan, shnee. Jo, edi, uh, UK variant, eh, no, aro, Delta variant, eh, at, ah, da, bish. Oko, at, ende, di, lha, un, olnili, gi, la, ladne, sak, di, na, asha, dino, atcha, kune, la, eh, bena, da, he, des, la, oko, di. Oh, yu, she, edi, sa, ay, da, ba, da, asse, go, bata, do, na, eh, on, za, she, izel, yo, ne, ya, he, skri. Aro di, lha, aga, ba, da, azige, ati, oyu, bichintahui, na, deh, do, eh, she, kha, oba, zu, di, zen. Oko di, cases, in lini, eh, were currently still in the yellow status, eh, hota, ye. Ye, nikid, nahosne, shik e ro shidne, oka, aro, eh, ne, oh, elchine, ah, kodo, ba, na, huishne, oko, sana, ah, nikid, ni, ah, eh, ya, shik e ro shidne. Etah, ah, kuyan, di, ati, na, do, eh, ati, na, do. Aro, be, be, elchitaholne, no, action, dahajo, be, ndano, tken. Aro, tchado, kah, ah, be, etah, ah, kuyan, aj, oh, shindle, je, do, be, mes, ye, nda, khe, da, jinzon. Ko, higi, ita, di, ta, eh, eh, do, ta, ah, be, na, hatan, nikidi, ne. Aro di, um, na, deh, eh, kote, uh, nikina, tan, lini, eh, hajo, be, etah, ah, kuyan, do, hajo, be, na, an, hino, tken, jo, hota, eh, do, ni. Chae, ago, da, jdo, jdo, gra, de, beni, ye, go, no, she, eh, eh, is. Aro, ka, oh, yu, go, ayn, da, ya. Di, kva, vaccination, ayn, da, ne, oh, deh, oba, ya, tchi, i, bahasne, kwa, eh. Be, ba, tchahon, ah, aho, nacha, atseho, nacha, od, si. Nacha, da, asse, go, eh, ikhe he. Beni, na, des, ni, edi, lha, shi, go, ayn, da, ne. Lha, ho, ayn, da, ya. Oko di, a, all, ah, at, ah, bel, has, and, ah, be, his, ah, ni, a, all, ah, at, ah, chode, deh, deh. Kashi, tesi, edi, na, od, si, gi, nikid, ne, uh, nikid, show, itili, hota, eh, ya, di, na, da, no, hota, yu, dahaa. Jo eh, kwa, ena, cha, ahonosen. You may have to show proof to enter a building, to enter a, a store, a property. So eh, ne, nacha, ba, ahonosen, shik e ro shidne. Do, di, eh, nikid, ahosen, dan, na, sa, oko, do, neli. We may have businesses, we may have organizations, enterprise, that may allow you to enter with a show proof, showing your proof, a vaccination card. Eh, na, ba, ah, kuyan, nacha, od, si, go, na, soc, oltsa, khe, chi. Eh, nda, tken, don, da, ja. Eh, chad, da, yin, ya, go, ko, ebel, uh, na, od, si, shindon, ni, do, oh, di, ni, do. Ab, eh, be, eh, ho, zeni, nikid, chansos, ntsa, ni, ra, kon, belkha, deh, di, chet. Jo, hota, eh, go, da, ntsi, ilkes. Eh, na, oko, deh, da, ba, ashta, do, ne. Aro, nikid, gohne, da, aro, da, do, ne, ne, hajo, be, eh, kida, holne. Che, ay, da, yu, ilsos, kashi, ay, da, ahonosen, hola, ah, shit, ah, shash, illyats, go, da, del, do, ne. No, chon, in, da, ah, in, na, adlo, eh, chon, pop, uh, uh, be, lato, be, nacha, ahhoti, oh. Jo, jo, hota, la, in, in, it, et, ho, hajo, ba, si, kes, da. Bela granai, kaj, eh, ilne, hard comment sets, nikilne. Kashi, eh, she, eh, she, eh, cha, i, oli, eh, jo, eh, nikid, dene, nikina, tkeni, eh, ala, la, jen, si, kost. Ah, stha, ne, ba, si, in, kes, aro, shan, zen, eh, aro, eh, she, sha, ido, li, zen, eh, an, eh, da, ha, zen. Ne, k, eh, namman, isye, eh, belkhe, je, na, alchinen, so, ken, na, likia. Eh, ba, adene, hajo, eh, beltaholne. Hashke, wa, ye, ne, eh, lha, do, she, apa, ho, na, oh, apa, hashdo, shke. Aro sahalle, aro, ulke, hatah, uh, alshon, yu, ni, yi, nikini. Ken, na, wa, ye, ni, da. Aro, ah, ah, ni, kashi, no, lna, nikid, eh, lini, lato, ne, isla, nikid, ah, ikke, ita, hasdi. Adna, chayet, da, aj, aj, zen, na, nikilkes. Oh, tsi, ite, hi, ite, shik e ro shidne, oko, nde, ye, go, kha, inolne. Ashlo, it, aro, le. Hatol, ni, do, hajo, hatis, in lini, ba, ah, kujeli, ah, do, tcholna, dahla, etat, so, da, do, zen. Aro, oh, be, elchke, je, ya, dah, tki, eh. Aro, na, nishi, no, lini, nikid, oh, hajo, aro, deh, dene, da, i, kha, lo, dene, dah, lna. Hajo, ba, kha, an, dahla, go, nikisadi, lini, ba, ah, kuyan. Chala, dene, aro, deh, ea, shi, kwa, eh, sa, ashta, oni, liso, chado, kha, lo, chachon, do, ne. Eh, na, hajo, bichri, ya, tki, aro, ah, na, ndle, eh, hajo, benosen. Aro, aro, kwa, eno, kahi, na, nisho, da, no, kahi, aj, do, eh, do, je, do, zen, oko, ah, alhi, eh. Ha, ea, she, zen, zen, oh, hazal, yat, eh, ho, ito, zen, oh, kodo, ha, ki, iti. Aro, aro, oh, shanosen, eh, nikil, lato, eh, do, lho. Eh, na, lato, shi, shika, aro, lho, hajo, aro, deh, ben, da, no, tken, do, le. Oko, ah, be, ito, it, ah, eh, kodo, ben, ylne, has, zen. Aro, ah, chichi, eh, kodo, na, na, or, kahi, kodo, nikid, si, ash, shik e ro shidne. Oko, one, sa, koshi, kodo, nikil, na, tahosilne, do, le, ikhe he, kujah, na, da, siyokezi. We like to end our town hall by thanking all the listeners. Thank you for your comments, whether they're positive, whether they're negative. We all learn from this, we have learned so much from the pandemic. We want you to stay safe, we love each and every one of you. Continue to wash your hands, continue to social.